Okay, we should be streaming now.
Cue. So I guess we'll give it five minutes and or until Angela gets back, whichever comes first.
Hello, I'm here.
There she is. She's first.
See, you said her name three times. That's why she appeared.
That's why she showed up.
That's right. That's how it works now. A lot of breath. Okay. Let's see if we can get an idea how many people we have and who's missing.
Madam Chair, a few more were just entering.
Okay. Paul Otto, Kathy, Stephen, Michael, Greg, Bill, Austin, Beth, Todd, Will, Adam, Mark. Your Secretary. Are we missing Region Two?
Thought I saw Dave.
Okay.
But I could be wrong.
Dave Benner? I don't see Dave Benner.
Maybe I'm wrong.
Wow. I suspect Mr. Benner, Mr. Benner is probably watching the end of the Green Bay game.
Let's see here. Are they still? Do they win? Are they still up? They were up.
Yeah, they're up in there likely to win. Yeah.
Yeah, Real Football took a backseat this this weekend. It starts up again after international break, so.
Oh, is that that sport called soccer that you're talking about?
No, football.
Oh, soccer.
Football. If 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 it's not hockey, it doesn't matter.
That's what I was about to say. Green Bay Packers. Is that a hockey team?
Yeah, don't you live in Florida? Do they even have like ice drinks?
They do.
Uh, yes, we have some of the best hockey teams in the NHL. Um, we we have phenomenal youth hockey. As a matter of fact, two of the young men on the international um gold medal winning USA team this weekend are both from on the Naples area.
I'm sorry, I fell asleep halfway through that sentence. Could you repeat that?
Uh, yeah, you're welcome.
I know your people are tired, Adrian.
I uh lived in Florida when the Panthers had that really exciting season when everyone was throwing rats on the ice.
You mean that one where the Golden Knights just owned them?
No, no, she means nineteen ninety-six.
Oh, I'll go way back. I'm old. I'm talking about when they just started.
That's ninety-six when they when they got, they were really good right from the from the gates and they did all the rat stuff.
The rat stuff was fantastic, but I want to know what happened to all those rats. I'm envisioning there's some abandoned warehouse somewhere in Miami that forty years from now, someone's going to open it up and it's just filled with plastic rats and they're going to be like, what? And to me, that's makes me smile.
You're probably right. That's where they get them. That's where they get them when they do like the promo, the rat promo nights. They just pull them out of storage.
Oh, because they would come with a plow. I mean, I went live to those games. They'd just plow them all up and then the ice would be covered again with those rats.
Florida is a hellscape with all sorts of venomous creatures and rodents.
They're they're people. Those are people, okay?
They're people.
Um, okay, I've texted Dave Benner and Martin Cowan.
I'll die on the Florida hill.
We're also missing.
Florida doesn't have hills.
No, that's a lie. We do have hills. They're garbage mountains.
Pardon me, trying to do business here. Um, Mr. Ford and Mr. Hall aren't here, so we are missing Region Eight. Uh, Mr. Nana isn't here, but Mr. Hurch is.
Yep. Let me message Pat. Oh, he says he'll be on. He'll be about five minutes later, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, it's five minutes, so he's like.
I was gonna say five minutes like past this or. Oh.
Five minutes past the five minute break period.
Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, remind me um later this evening if you can remember because I can't to um loop you in on some some foreign policy like international stuff. I could use a little help with that.
I.
Sweet. Okay, uh, everybody, we've had a delightful time um insulting small furry creatures from um the great state regulators. I think we've done our due diligence on reaching out to people. Um. Okay, uh, Mr. Benner is not going to be able to attend because he had a family pet emergency that sounded quite emergency-ish. Um. Let me respond to him real quick. Okay.
He's watching the game.
Probably that's office, maybe. Okay, it's uh now I cannot see the time because that's what happens when you have the giant screen up like that. It's uh seven oh six PM Eastern Time. I'm going to go ahead and call us to order. Uh, Madam Secretary, when you are ready, would you mind doing attendance for us?
Hey, Ms. McCardle.
Present.
Mr. Watkins.
Her.
Mr. Hagopian.
Here.
I am present, Mr. Blankenship.
I'm here.
Mr. Malagon.
Present.
Mr. Nikala.
Present.
Mr. Ruffo.
Present.
Ms. Yena Scabbage.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Benner said he would not be here. Mr. Dasing.
Here.
Mr. Ford has not arrived. Mr. Hay Hayman.
You'll I be hearing stuff?
Ms. Hayes.
I'm here.
I don't believe Mr. Nana is here. Mr. Tunyevich.
Here.
Ms. Vest.
Here.
I don't see Mr. Alstad or Mr. Cowan, Mr. Dar.
Here.
Mr. Hurch.
Here.
Mr. Hyman.
Present.
I didn't have you. You snuck in on me. Hold on one second. Let me mark you as present. Mr. Redpath.
Yes.
And Mr. Nana is entering right now.
I'm asking Mr. Alstad's chops real quickly.
Okay, and so Madam Chair, we are missing. We don't have anyone from Region Two, so Mr. Benner, Mr. Cowan are not present. Mr. Ford and Mr. Hall are not present, so we do not have Region Eight. Um, and out of the alternates, we are missing obviously Mr. Hall, Mr. Cowan, but also Mr. Alstad.
Point of information. Uh, am I allowed to vote for Region Two and Region Eight since they're not present if I called dibs?
Um, that dibs is out of order, but um thank you for, thank you for asking.
I tried Region Two and Region Eight. You heard it.
All right, now that there's no dibs, um, the the next item of business that we have up is public comment. So here's what we're gonna do. You're gonna go down to the bottom. You're gonna click on reactions, um, raise hand or that's just straight to raise hand if you're not on your phone. Uh, you get two minutes each. Please state your name and the state that you're from. Sometimes I know that and I state it for you, but I don't always. And this is for members of the public. We also let LNC members go, but we always give the public uh first first bite at the apple. Anybody here for public comment? Going once, going twice. Okay, um, Mr. Malagon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to pitch the Libertarian Party of California Convention that is coming up February twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. We just announced our very special guest, Mr. Robert F. Kennedy Jr. will be joining us for a POTUS panel with Dr. Michael Rektinwald and Mr. Mike Termonte. So definitely come out, get your tickets if you're on the West Coast. Even if you're not on the West Coast, come out. It's gonna be a really good time. Strongly encourage it. So if you have any questions, it can be found on our website. And if Mr. Watkins asks when it is, I will violate the nap. Hopefully, that's not the question that he asks next. There. Uh, but please do come out. It's gonna be a really good. We have a great speaker lineup, Dr. David Friedman, uh, Mr. Chris Ruffer, uh, our very own LNC Chair and uh Dan McKnight. We have a comedy night with Brian McWilliams and Adam Nutter. It's gonna be a great time all the way around, so definitely come out.
Thank you, Mr. Malagon. What was that date again?
February twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, so Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
What year? Just to be sure.
It's the year of our Lord, twenty twenty-four.
It's the current year. Um, I also want to remind everyone that we are in the process of planning another awesome anti-war rally and that's gonna be February seventeenth at the Lincoln Memorial in Washington DC. If you're interested in um attending, we would love to have you. If you're interested in volunteering, we're looking for volunteers to help coordinate uh transportation and for uh social media and press. We have some really awesome PR volunteers, but we can always use more people to help us get the word out. Um, let me jump. Uh, Madam Secretary, would you like to go next or would you like to go last?
Well, I had a question for Mr. Malagon.
Sure.
Uh, who were the speakers?
Uh, you know what? I'll take the time. Why not? The speakers again are Robert F. Kennedy Jr., David Friedman, uh, Michael Rektinwald, Mike Termonte, Dan McKnight, uh, we have Larry Sharp, I forgot Larry Sharp, Maj Teray, uh, Chris Ruffer, Adam Nutter and Brian McWilliams. Thank you for asking, Madam Secretary. I I know you probably weren't paying attention the first time.
Uh, Mr. Ford just entered.
Fantastic. Welcome, Mr. Ford. Thank you so much. Um, let's jump to Ms. Yena Scavage.
Yes, I just want to remind everybody that the Arizona State Convention is this coming Saturday in Tucson and we will be broadcasting um our presidential debate with uh the six presidential candidates and moderated by Doc Dixon, the awesome um libertarian comedian and magician, who is also a very serious guy. Um, it will be broadcast on the Arizona Libertarian Party YouTube channel starting at one thirty uh Arizona time, which hmm, let's see, is I never remember what what time zone we're in since it changes, Mountain Standard Time.
What is that in real time?
The Arizona time is the only time that's real time.
Can confirm. Arizona's the only rational state in the Union.
We do not have daylight savings.
That's fair. Actually, that's a very fair point.
I just want to remind everybody that the revolution was fought on Eastern Standard Time.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Um, thank you, Ms. Yena Scavage. Okay. If there's no other public comment, um, Madam Secretary, are you able to make me co-host?
Uh, yes, one moment.
Thank you so much.
So I usually do that immediately.
Yeah, that's that's fine. If there's no other public comment, let's go on to our next item of business, which is Convention Oversight Committee update uh with Mr. Malagon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, there are no updates at this time because I don't know what I'm doing. I would like that direct quote to be used for later publication. But on a serious note, actually, there are several updates. So uh first and foremost, uh, there are going to be some convention committee appointment changes. That's the most exciting one. The convention committee is very excited about that. That's gonna happen later today. We also have all speakers selected and they will be released in blocks. So the first uh slate of speakers is expected to be announced this coming week. I'm connecting with staff to get the word out on that. Should be coming no later than this coming week. We came in just under a hundred thousand dollars in revenue before early or by the time Early Bird ended. So all the Early Bird revenue totaled in just under a hundred thousand dollars. We did have about ten to fifteen thousand dollars more come in after Early Bird, so thank uh thanks to all of you who waited until after the deadline to purchase your packages. That was very helpful to the convention committee and the COC thanks you for your contribution. We also have met uh thirty percent of our room block uh expectation for the rooms at the Hilton in Washington DC. That number is as of, I believe that's as of the thirty-first of December. I could be wrong about that, so I'm assuming that more people have booked since then. It's probably higher now and that does not include the uh certain uh staff and we're probably closer to forty percent if I'm to be honest about that. It doesn't include staff and speaker rooms that have not yet been set aside for that yet. I would very much encourage people to purchase their rooms sooner rather than later. Once they are gone, there is no there is no guarantee that they will be able to accommodate us further and that is the best deal that you're going to get for any sort of rooming in Washington DC. That is a very expensive area and one fifty, I think it's one fifty-nine a night. If memory serves, it's gonna be the best deal that you're gonna get. So strongly encourage people to do that. Airbnbs and other hotels are gonna be two to three times as much, just depending on whatever. We also have the suites and breakout rooms available on the website. So if you go on the convention website, you'll be able to get our suites. We have three available for purchase, our presidential suite, our Chief of State suite and the Calamara Suites. We also have, so if you're hosting an event, if you are planning on wanting to uh host as some sort of event or you know, four or six people to a room, something like that, strongly encourage you to look into that pricing. And that's all available on the website along with detailed descriptions and pictures and all of that. We also have breakout rooms avail- oh, uh, while we're still on the rooms really quickly, we do have executive Capital City executive level rooms available, which are much nicer king rooms. Uh, the nicest rooms that the hotel has available for single kings or double, uh, just kings, I believe. And they are on the top floor. They overlook the monuments. It's a really great view and it has all the amenities that you would need for a king room. We also have breakout rooms available for rent per day downstairs. So if you are a caucus or you're hosting an event, whether it be a POTUS event or for some other event that you're looking to host, liberty-minded events, feel free to please go on the website and reserve a breakout room. What else is there? Let me look at my notes here. Uh, regular pricing went into effect on January first and it will stay that way. There are no more sales. Uh, nothing else is coming. So those of you that got on top of the ball and bought your Early Bird tickets, congratulations. Uh, the rest of you are gonna kick yourselves when you see the speakers, but we thank you in advance for your contributions to come. We do need more volunteers, so I would strongly suggest that I believe our tellers are taken care of, but we can always, it's always better to have more volunteers and less volunteers. So if you're interested in being a teller, working registration, being a runner, being like a delegate usher, we have a long list of uh volunteer opportunities for people. Please contact Meredith Hayes at meredith.hayes@lp.org. She is our volunteer coordinator. And she will provide you descriptions and there should, there should also be a Google survey going out that will explain what the different positions are and maybe you want to volunteer, but you're not sure where your acumen is best served. Uh, and we can help you determine that. As long as you want to volunteer, we need people that are eager and willing. And I believe that is it. I will now field any questions with the rest of my time. Madam, well, uh, Madam Chair, may I call on the secretary?
Yes, and I'll I'll have a couple of comments.
Madam Secretary, please.
Am I wish more a comment as a fellow member of the COC? I'd like to bootstrap a bit on your comments about the rooms that I hope people take into consideration. A lot of the convention sites we go to, I mean, DC is such a unique location and the convention floor is absolutely beautiful. But um staying offsite is going to be extraordinarily difficult. It's not just a cost thing. DC traffic is so material that you could be twenty minutes away and think that's fine and then you end up missing things because parking and, you know, and traffic. DC is just such a unique creature and the convention space where everything is located on multiple floors. I mean, we've done this before, but it's very expansive. So even just getting to the hill and then there's a a goodly amount of time to get to where you want to go. So not just cost-wise, just for your own convenience-wise. Take my advice, you're going to want to stay at the hotel.
Thank you.
I will just actually, I'm I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if I could piggyback a little bit off of that. I was uh told by when I did the second walkthrough in DC, not only does the secretary make an excellent point there, but at any given time, there could be a motorcade for, we don't know what, you know, the president's schedule is or the vice president's schedule is. If there's a motorcade, it almost always goes by that hotel. Is there something or other happening? It can block everything off and make it an absolute pain to get to convention. So you might miss some hours of business, some of the events. Uh, that's just another reason to stay at that venue. And that does include pedestrians as well. They stop everything. You can't cross the street. You can't do any of that. They take their motorcades very seriously, apparently, so. Mr. Ford.
Uh, Mr. Malagon, excellent job. Thank you very much for the update. Just a quick question, process question. The upgraded hotel rooms, where are they? And are any of them, would any of them be considered suites per se, like a hospitality suite?
Sure, excellent question. So on the site, those are, I believe, the link, if the secretary would be so kind as to drop the link in the chat uh for the rooms, they're the the least expensive rooms there. I think I think they're called executive level cities uh city rooms or city view room, Capital City rooms or something like that, but those aren't, I mean, you can host as many people as you can fit in there, but they're not suites. I mean, it's just a standard king room that is slightly bigger than a regular king room and has a really great view of DC. Those are the, that's like the big thing. It's their their highest, literally their highest level rooms, single king room. So I wouldn't recommend it for an event. But if you want to really ball out while you're in DC, that would be the room for you. And I'll have, as soon as the secretary finds the link, she'll drop it in the chat.
Um.
Great. And then just a quick follow-up. What rooms would you consider if uh if a caucus or a local caucus or a local, local affiliate wanted to have um some type of function? What what's your suggestions?
My suggestion would be, and they, these are limited to, I believe we have seven available, the Calamara Suites. So those do open up. You can host probably about thirty to forty people comfortably. Uh, you can, we can ensure that you get catering up there if you need it. That would be an additional cost, of course, but the Calamara Suites aren't as big as the Chief of State Suite, of which there is only one, and the Presidential Suite, of which there is only one, but about thirty to thirty-five people. I suspect you could host an event up there.
Um, Mr. Malagon. Um, I've seen all the ad copy and things, but I can't seem to find that link on the website and it's probably me just being dumb, so I can't drop the link. Um, I I've never went to look for it on the website because I've always seen it through our backend.
That did not show. Let, yeah, phrasing, Madam Secretary, please. This is a family, this is a family party.
Uh, but the the, I call it the calamari. The calamari sweets are are beautiful. And would really, really recommend those.
I see. I'm sorry. I need to talk to Mr. Hudson about putting the link up on the convention website. So the link as of now, and I can drop it in the chat, is lnctwentytwentyfour.com slash private dash rooms backslash. So let me put that in the chat really quickly. And uh, but that's where those can be purchased and people have been reaching out to get them. I believe that there is a counter on the website, so it lets you know how many there are of each particular suite or room. And then uh it, with each person, purchase, it starts counting down. So let me just go ahead and put that in here.
Mr. Malagon, excuse me. I know we're about out of time. I just wanted to ask if you recall the pricing for those Calamara Suites.
Uh, so that would be, I believe it's seven thousand dollars. I'm doing it off the top of my head and those are done in blocks. So all of the suites and those high executive rooms are done in blocks of six nights that start Wednesday night and go to Tuesday morning. So check out on uh Tuesday morning. So six nights, Wednesday night through Monday night.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are at time. I had a couple more comments. Did anybody want to move to extend time?
I will move to extend time by five minutes.
God, peace.
Nice. It's been moved and seconded to extend time by five minutes. Any objections? Going once, going twice, hearing none. Okay, um, Madam Secretary, is your hand up?
It is, um, but.
Can I, but can I jump in though? Because I haven't.
Of course you can. You're the chair.
Yeah, thank you. Um, some people have have asked about what's happening with marketing for the convention, kind of what's going on and I think there have been some questions just as like, are we doing anything? What are we doing? Are we doing the right thing? We have staff meetings pretty much five days a week. Um, and we work really well together. I I really think our staff is doing an awesome job. And as evidenced by our financial turnaround and Mr. Malagon and occasionally Mr. Watkins attend staff meetings. Um, I I'd say at least once every other week, maybe once a week to work with staff on, you know, what rooms are we selling? What's the pricing? What's the website look like? I know there have been, you know, website errors, but we try to get those turned around and fixed pretty quickly. Uh, which speakers should we market first? How should we do it? How should we talk about room pricing and and all of that? Um, we're not gonna just dump a marketing plan out into the general public because that would be a really poor business decision and that's just like not how we, how anybody should operate, but it's absolutely being handled. And I'm really confident in staff and I appreciate that Mr. Malagon takes the time to attend staff meetings. So, so yeah, I I'm super excited about some of the speakers we we've booked. I think they were very gracious to to agree to speak at our convention and we got some pretty big names and I'm just like, I'm really excited. And we're gonna continue to round out our list of speakers. There's a few more that we'd like to add and we're, you know, we're gunning for the the people that we think are gonna be like the most well-received and that our members are gonna be the most excited about. So if you have questions about it, please bear with us. We're, we're doing our jobs. We're getting it out there and I think we're doing a great job of it. Um, Madam Secretary.
Yeah, just wanted to add about the rooms as well, and this is just the reality of it. I'm I'm saying it to just so that people have proper expectations. Again, this is um, DC, uh, they take their cut of each bed, um, meaning these are not two queen room beds. So if you are planning on sharing uh rooms with somebody, uh, with people, um, unless you're in a romantic relationship, you probably do not want to share a bed thinking it's a queen bed. It is a double-sized bed. It does say that on the website, but people are so used to it being cleaned that I think you just don't even notice there. They do say it plainly on the website, but I didn't even notice that until I went looking for it. Um, because when we first stayed there, I'm like, there's, this isn't a queen bed. Obviously, and most married couples will be fine, but just keep that in mind as you're booking the room. If you're trying to, you know, save costs and bunk up with people that the 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 double, the double bedrooms are literally d- two double beds.
It's okay to explore.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Malagon?
I would just, I'll end by encouraging everyone, if you do have a a real question and it's not some sort of leading question or something that's just gonna get put on social media to make us look bad, uh, please do email me. I'm always happy to answer questions and be transparent. LNC members are welcome to request to come to COC meetings if they wish. It's of course at my discretion, but they're welcome to, uh, we've had several LNC members attend these meetings and they'll be the first to tell you that they think that everything is going swimmingly now, uh, at least the last three meetings have. So yeah, feel free to email me.
Thank you, Mr. Malagon. Um, okay, Madam Secretary, we actually missed one item on the agenda that was noticed. I I apologize. I didn't catch it on the agenda earlier.
What is that, Madam Chair?
Discussion of appointment, um, discussion of financial goals, fifteen minutes.
Oh, okay. Well, it was noticed, so we can just add it wherever you'd like, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, there's one other one, but we'll get to that. Uh, let's just jump into it right now. Um, Mr. Vice Chair, do you mind timing us for fifteen minutes for discussion?
Yeah, started just now.
Thanks. Awesome. We probably won't need the full fifteen minutes, but we've had four months in a row now where our uh our revenue has been over a hundred and twenty-five K, which is awesome. Some of that has been convention revenue on like the the heavy C. Think December, we were like ninety-eight K and then over forty K in convention revenue. So that gives you an idea of um where the convention revenue is at and how all that adds up. So my goal is to bring us up now that we're meeting that just bare minimum goal of just literally are there dollars coming in? Is it more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month? My goal is to now have staff stretch to bring in a hundred and twenty-five thousand non-convention revenue dollars every month. We'll see if we can make that goal in the next two months. Um, but we're looking pretty good financially. I'm looking at potentially adding a few more hours to a couple of staff members. So I think that we need um we need just like a little bit more with with marketing and fundraising. Um, one of our IT guys is almost finished with a with a major. and fundraising. Um, one of our IT guys is almost finished with a, with a major project that's going to be saving us thousands of dollars over the next year. And then he'll be able to, once that's shelved and done and completed, he'll be able to focus a little bit more on, on CRM issues and just, you know, IT help requests and things of that nature. And fixing all those problems also generates more revenue because then we have happier people who want to donate to the party or our processes are working more efficiently. We're able to make money faster. We don't have staff sitting on their hands with dead time, you know, that, that I'm paying them for because they're blocked on XYZ problems. So all in all, I think that things are looking really good financially. Um, if anyone has any questions, now is a great time to ask them.
I have, uh, I have a question, I'm sure.
Sure.
Uh, when is, uh, I guess, how do I want to phrase this? Uh, the stretching of, of these goals, when is that expected to take place? Is that something that's going to happen maybe in February, March?
Um, I mean, my goal, my loose goal is like, you know, March, January, February, well, I would, I guess by the beginning of March, I'd like to see us end of February.
So like end of first quarter, start of second.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, I'm not putting it in writing. It's not a resolution. Like it's just something that we need to work towards. And so I want us to get halfway there in January and then get the other half of the way there by the end of February. And, and if not, you know, completely all the way there, like pretty close.
Okay. Uh, and then just I'll add really quickly, not to go back to the other item, but I did forget one update that kind of ties into this with fundraising. I did, uh, revise the entire COC budget and have sent it over to Mister Hagopian for feedback, you as well. So the, the committee has also seen it. So hopefully we'll be able to make strides there. I think it's a little bit more accurate now. And I'll be willing and obviously willing and, uh, work to work with staff and trying to help them achieve those goals, at least on the committee side, uh, the convention committee side as much as possible.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, Mister Tuniyevich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask, and first of all, I, I think it's great to set that hundred and twenty-five goal separate from the convention revenue to break it out like that. I guess my only question is either now or sometime, you know, as we go along the next month or two. Will we see some sort of exposition of, okay, of the one twenty-five? How much is manager donor? How much is email appeal? How much is other types of fundraising? Um, do you have an expectation of how that might break out? Or if and when you do, can you share it with all of us guys? Just, you know, to be able to track how we're doing versus expectations.
In addition to the budget, you mean? You mean like how we actually make money?
Um, so every uh, month of revenue is its own little basket of things, right? So all I'm asking is do you have a sense since you've just created this, uh, goal, which I think is a good one? Um, what buckets that money will be coming from?
Yeah, I do. I do, but I don't want to like dump all of that publicly before having more conversations with staff on it, but absolutely.
Sure. Well, all I'm asking is if the LNC as a whole can see that, that helps us better understand how we're doing. That's it.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mister Hagopian.
Yep. I do not have the, the monthly budget in front of me. I'm going to pull that up by the end of the meeting, but just wanted to give people a reminder, uh, that we are looking at about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-five thousand a month in the budget. I do believe it starts just below that. Uh, for the first three months. So just keep that in mind. Then if we start falling below, we have to do something with the budget. If we start going above, we can fund more states. So, so this initiative is really important. And, uh, Mister Tuniyevich's question, I just want to make it clear for anybody who, who isn't following, um, closely on the monthly financials that we do show how much convention revenue is in there. Uh, if I ask a question on where, just feel free to ping me and I can walk through that or I can put a description on the list. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Gopian. Uh, one more thing on convention revenue, uh, I guess in revenue in general, I, I see every single electronic, uh, transaction that comes through. It, it, every single dollar goes through my inbox. So I know very well, like how much money we make, where the money comes from, which appeals are bringing in money, all of that. And Mister Malagon gets a report, I believe every forty-eight hours on convention revenue sales. So when I say we're on top of it, we're like extremely meticulously on top of it. And that's how we know if we need to adjust something, you know, oh, this didn't work. This isn't good. You know, we need to pivot, so on and so forth. Well, this was awesome. Let's repeat it. Um, I just think it's really important to pay attention to those details, especially when you're, when you're starting something out and it's like your first time, because then, you know, it's quite, quite the learning experience. You can have a faster understanding of what's going on and, and how to course correct it or, or celebrate if you need to. Okay. If there's no other questions, we can jump to the next agenda item, which is ballot access committee update, um, with Mister Nana.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so we've had two meetings since the last time, uh, we met as an LNC, uh, last month. Um, it's really not a ton going on other than some updates for, uh, continuing drives. Um, in North Dakota, we have Andy Jacobs on the ground there collecting petition signatures. Um, I don't think we know exactly the number that we're at right now. Um, the state claims that they have some petitions too, uh, but we don't know how much that is. Um, so we have, uh, Andy on the ground again, and he told us that based on his production, uh, they should be done by the end of this month. So hopefully that timeline holds and we can get Andy out of there and see if he wants to go somewhere else for us. Um, aside from North Dakota, we have Ohio going on right now. Uh, the Ohio petition drive is going, um, honestly quicker than I personally expected. Uh, we were able to get uh, Bob Lynch to come out here. We've had some other folks come out for short periods of time. And then we also have Lee Evans, who just came up to Ohio within the last week or so as well. Um, and Lee has committed to staying here until the drive is done. We have um, a little north of three thousand signatures right now. Um, I'll have an exact number for you once, uh, we count the petitions that are in our PO box. Um, but, but there's not a ton in there. So, uh, just north of three thousand is, is your number there. So we should be done in Ohio. Uh, if all goes well, within the next month or two as well. And then we're working with the folks in New Mexico. Um, obviously, as you all know, they're very, very green. So uh, just trying to help them along as much as possible. Um, they have a couple of they're not issues with the petition sheet, but, um, preferences with the petition sheet. Uh, they're trying to get a hold of the Secretary of State there. Uh, which as, especially the chair and secretary know, it can be uh, kind of a challenge. Um, they're not easy to get a hold of. Uh, but the reason they're trying to get a hold of them is because in order to validate signatures in New Mexico, at least to do it free without buying the list, you'll need the date of birth for everybody who signs. Well, date of birth is not a box on their petition form. Um, so they're going to see if the Secretary of State will um, let, uh, will alter the form to, to add that. I, I doubt. I honestly doubt that they will, but I mean, it's worth asking. It's not, it's not going to hurt anything. Um, and maybe we'll get um, maybe we'll get lucky. So, um, we'll see what happens with that. Um, and they're, right now they're just trying to gather some volunteer signatures. Um, before we send some folks down there, we don't, obviously we haven't asked the LNC for any money for New Mexico yet, but I assume uh, that will be forthcoming here pretty soon. And the other state that is, um, going on right now that it's in its infancy is Kentucky. Um, Kentucky is, um, you know, unfortunately has not committed to putting in any money to the drive. So we're not really sure. Um, you know, what, what contribution the national party will, will make down there. If anything, if it comes down to, you know, Kentucky versus somebody else. Um, but I do plan to go down there uh, sometime either late this month or early next month, depending on um, when they are available to see if I can't at least train some of their volunteers on how to actually collect signatures because while they're not as green as New Mexico, they're, they're very green when it comes to petition drives and none of them really know how to collect a signature or even really what they're doing. So um, I figured I'd go down there and see if I could help them out. And then also, uh, just kind of make it known that we need some sort of contribution from them, whether that be volunteer signatures, at least, you know, a little bit of cash if they can spare it. Like, you know, I know they don't have a ton of money in the bank and they are um, spending money to migrate to a new CRM, but um, trying to impress upon them that any sort of good faith effort would be better than than nothing. Um, so we'll see how that goes and I'll keep you guys posted. Um, and then I guess the last thing would be main registration drive. Um, which uh, should be completed by now. It's after the first of the year. We don't have, or at least I haven't heard in the last couple of days word on whether the state has um, certified that we are going to be on the ballot or not. So, uh, keeping an eye on that one. Um, unless Mister Ford happens to know, I know he's up there, but we have not heard and I assume the state has not told them yet.
Would you like me to jump on this right now, Mister Nana?
If you have any information more than I do.
I, 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 I'd like to couch it like this, um, uh, twofold states. Uh, I think we're going to have a very happy announcement soon. But it is the general consensus given, as we've all seen on a national level, the the madness that can happen in the, in the great state of Maine, um, we're going to make that official when it's official, which should be very shortly either way. Um, so you'll be hearing from us very, very shortly. Um, because again, the madness is real in Maine. And then I think we're going to have some progress in Rhode Island as well soon. So I'll keep your, uh, committee on, on top of that. All right, buddy.
Appreciate you, Mister Ford. Uh, that's really all I got unless there are any questions for me and I will update that sheet um, that I kind of use as a running, um, prog- progress tracker. Um, that I usually send in for in-person meetings. That way we can just kind of, people can look at it at a glance if you forget what the update says, or if you're not at the meeting. And I'll send that, I'll try to send that over by the end of tomorrow, but, um, I am working in the office tomorrow. So I'm not sure when I'm going to get out of there, but I will.
If I may make a quick point of personal privilege, I'd just like to remind the secretary that she is still screen sharing. So in the event that she has something private.
I don't have anything private. I was just doing some.
Okay. Just, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware. Anyway, I, apologies, Mister Nana.
Uh, no worries. That was
No, we're just doing work.
Um, so yeah, like I said, that's really it. Unless there are any questions I'd be happy to answer. Um, yeah, things are going well.
All right. Thank you very much, Mister Nana. Um.
Looks like Mister Redpath and Mister Ford both have their hands up.
Yep.
And just FYI, we're a little bit more than three and a half minutes.
Okay. Does somebody want to move to extend time by, do we need five or 10 minutes?
I'll move to extend by five minutes.
One second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to extend time by five minutes. Uh, Mister Redpath, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say with respect to North Dakota, uh, the number I got about a week ago or no, at this point, probably a week and a half ago from, um, Andy Jacobs was sixty-three hundred signatures. We need seven thousand net, but there's no voter registration uh, there. Um, so we, we eight thousand gross signatures should get it done. And of course, anybody who uh, anybody in Kentucky should, uh, tune in this coming Thursday evening to my petitioning masterclass. Uh, this coming Thursday evening, uh, at eight PM Eastern time is my recollection. That would be a good way to help get people trained.
Thank you so much. Um, Mister Malagon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to assure ballot access that they will have a room for right after the POTUS candidate is nominated uh, to do their thing. Uh, so that has been taken care of. It was brought to my attention and you do have, uh, that private room. If you need more than an hour and a half, do let me know, but I do have it scheduled for an hour and a half. I can always extend it. And if something changes and you need something else or you need specific setups or whatever, just let me know. But I do have that rooms for you guys.
That's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mister Nana, I need to try to grab a, a phone call with you about ballot access at some point in the next week. Um, let's try to make that happen. And I think that that's it for this, um, for this agenda item. Up next is policy manual amendment.
Okay. I believe that is up on the screen. I put the language in the bottom of the agenda to make it easy. This is to amend policy manual section one point zero two, dealing with previous notice. Um, as everyone knows, uh, for motions that require previous notice or have a different vote threshold for previous notice or for these special meetings, it's required seven days. Um, when it really should be five, uh, eight. We over the years, uh, just to give some background, so I am moving this. It didn't go through the policy manual committee. So I, I'll, I'll wait for a second before giving an argument.
One second.
Okay, um, there had been some roving timeframes o- over the past probably four or five years. And at one point our email ballots used to be ten days long rather than seven. And then previous notice for an electronic LNC meeting, um, was then seven days, because that would make it quicker than a email ballot. But when we switched the, when the bylaws were amended to make email ballots seven days, we changed the part of the policy manual that said, oh, any one-fifth of the LNC can call for a special meeting, um, provided they get five days notice. Well, that's in conflict here because that would be a special meeting where it says that previous notice has to be seven days. You can't give seven days notice for something that you might only be giving five days until it's called. So this was, just was never caught to be changed back when we were shifting all the timeframes to be um, a little shorter. So this just makes it consistent with the amount of time that I think it's twenty-five percent of the LNC, not one-fifth, but whatever number it is can band together and call for a special meeting. And this would also apply to these special meetings and our regular meetings. As a matter of fact, for anything that does require, uh, prior notes.
All right. Um, is there any discussion on the amendment? Any at all? Any questions?
No.
Is there any objection to the policy manual amendment? Just taking it from seven seven days to five. Not seventy-five. Five. All right.
I would say one, but I mean, five is good.
Five is good. Okay. If there's, uh, no objection, going once, going twice, three times, uh, I'm going to say the motion passes and, uh, thank you very much, Madam Secretary.
Thank you. The amended policy manual will go up in the next couple of days. I, I have it already with all those amendments we did last meeting, but I knew I was going to do this and there was no point in you know, having two versions within a couple of days of each other.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, our next agenda item is convention committee appointment removal. Portions may be in executive session if we think that it's necessary. But I'm going to go ahead and move that we remove, uh, Robert Kraus from the convention oversight committee.
I will enthusiastically second.
Okay. Um, if you want discussion, um, Mister Watkins?
I'd like to call the question.
Thank you, Mister Watkins. Question has been called. Is there any objection to calling the question?
I object, Madam Chair. I think there should be discussion of this item.
Okay. Um, we should go to a vote on the calling of the question. All in favor of calling the question? Madam Secretary, do you mind doing an informal tally?
Um, I, I can actually do a roll call. Let me just go to my, my live voting uh, template here. If I miss anyone, let me know, because this was kind of, um, impromptu. Mister Benner is not here. Mister Blankenship?
Path.
Mister Dassing?
Yes.
Mister Ford?
Pass.
I'm sorry, was that a pass?
Pass.
Mister Hagopian?
No.
Mister Hayman?
If this is for calling the question, I say aye.
I am going to abstain. Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mister Malagon?
I will vote yes, because we've already had this conversation and people should be at meetings.
Mister Nana?
Uh, Mister Nana is out. He's waiting to get back in. I think he got kicked out.
Oh, okay. I'll come back.
So here, hold on, I'm letting him in. Sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I'll come back. Um, Mister Nakala?
I abstain.
Mister Rupa?
Yes.
Mister Tuniyevich?
No.
Ms. Best? I, is Ms. Best still here? Uh, Mister Dar?
No.
Mister Watkins?
Yes.
Ms. Yenna Scabbage?
Yes.
Going back to the passes. Going back to the passes, Mr. Blankenship?
Abstain.
Mr. Ford?
I'm gonna abstain.
Mr. Nana? Are you, what we're voting on, cause I think you might have missed it, is calling the question on the chair's motion?
Um. What's the vote total, if you don't mind me asking?
Uh, the vote total is seven yes, three noes. It requires a two-thirds vote.
I'll vote yes to call the question. That's fine.
One moment. Oh, messing up here. Okay, Madam Chair, it is eight, uh, yes, three no for extensions. That is two-thirds. Would you care to vote?
We're already at two-thirds, correct?
Yes, we are.
Okay, then the chair is not voting. Okay, question is called. So Madam Secretary, when you're ready. Um, if you don't mind, could you bring up the, um. A roll call vote and, um. What was I gonna ask you? So sorry. Oh, uh, where we can see it on the screen.
Oh, sure. Um, let me just share a different screen and just an FYI, um. Ms. Best has re, um, entered the meeting and, and just in case anyone is curious. I have a lisp, if you haven't noticed, and I just have difficulty with those vowels. I am not like emphasizing. Ms. Best's name for any reason other than it's difficult for me. I just wanted everyone to understand that. Cause I feel very awkward and I don't want anyone to think, to read anything into that. It's just my lisp. It gets really bad with certain vowel, with certain com-. Combinations. Okay, one moment, let me. Stop this share and pull up my other screen. Okay, you should be seeing my live votes.
Thank you very much. We are good to go.
Okay, Mr. Benner is not here. Mr. Blankenship?
Path.
Mr. Dassing?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
Pass.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yes.
Mr. Heyman?
This is to remove Mr. Kraus, right?
From the convention oversight committee.
Then, yes.
I will vote yes. Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Malagon?
Aye.
Mr. Nana?
Pass.
Mr. Nakala?
I'm abstain.
Mr. Rupa?
Yes.
Mr. Tunyevich?
No.
Ms. Best?
No.
Mr. Watkins?
You're.
Ms. Yenna Scabbage?
Yes.
Mr. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Ford?
I'm gonna abstain.
Mr. Nana?
Uh, my vote does, looks like it does not matter. I will abstain if that's the case.
It, it's just a majority, Mr. Nana. So, Madam Chair, the vote is ten yes. Two no, three abstentions.
Thank you. The vote passes.
The convention committee thanks you all.
Okay, thank you very much. There's one item left on the agenda, I believe.
I would move to adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Can I, I'm sorry, may I object? I don't wanna be that person, but can we discuss really quickly the dates for the next in-person meeting? And, uh, did we decide on the first week of April?
Because it's not agenda.
Not officially, not officially, but instead of just doing it over a long email thing.
Here's what we should do. We should do the motion and then we should just stay on and talk about it. Cause you're right.
I second the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Any objection?
Before, yes, I object. Before we do, I would like to ask Mr. Malagon when the California dates are for the convention.
You know what? I'll promote it again. That's absolutely fine. February twenty-third through the twenty-fifth.
You're gonna make me commit murder on the live stream.
I move to remove Andrew Watkins. From ever, from life.
Come to order, come to order, come to order. Um, all right, any objections? Going once, going twice. We are adjourned. Off with your heads. Um, you're all very bad. Now, uh, thank you very much. We're adjourned at seven fifty-five P M. That was the fastest, uh, online meeting we've had in so long. Um, but don't go anywhere, cause Mr. Malagon's correct. Mr. Nana?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if we know, if we have like a list of people interested in, in filling the vacancy that we just created.
That was the other thing that was actually agendized, but, um, was not actually typed up on the agenda. And.
Way to call me out, man.
Well, I did, I missed it. I'm the one that you sent it to me and I was like.
No, no, you, I'm just messing with you.
I was like, send it up. Looks great. Um, yeah.
Are we still running the live stream?
Um, yeah, let me stop the live stream.